John? Good, okay. Thank you. Okay, the meeting will now come to order. We'll begin with introduction of members and seating of alternates. We'll start with town staff. And here on site, we have Dawn.
I'm Dawn.
Thank you. And on Zoom, we have John.
Hi, John, this is Kevi. My name is John.
Okay, thanks, John. Any other town staff? Nope. Okay, for commission members, we'll begin introductions starting on my far left. Tom Bradshaw.
Victoria Chetchet.
Bob Ellsworth.
Santel Foster.
Carolyn Freeman.
Robert Taylor.
Okay. So we will not be seeing any alternate members tonight. So next item is to accept the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, the agenda is accepted as presented. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission's Application 21-12, which are amendments to the Town of Portland zoning regulations. Now, before I open the public hearing, I guess I'd like to get consensus from the commission members as to how we think we can best handle this. We have received several comments from the town attorney questioning the wording on some of our, some of the, some of the language in the, in the motion, in the right, in the amended regulations. So interested to how people feel about handling this. Should we do it tonight as part of a public hearing? Should we not open the public hearing and work on this wordsmithed, if you will, until we get it right? Or if there are any other options, I'm willing to hear them.
I'd probably think it'd be better if we get the text as much of it in a finalized form as possible prior to, I think, submitting it to the public hearing.
I agree.
That way, it's, I think it's an easier process at that point, rather than making changes now and then people commenting on old text and new text. And it's just, I think we'd just get more confusing. Rather, just submit something that we're all satisfied would be finalized or proposed finalized text. Great.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree, but I also wanted to mention that I know that Rose had a lot to do with the wording in this, and I wanted to make sure that she could be included. I don't know how that happens.
Can I give her my copy of this right now?
No.
Okay.
John?
Yes?
That's a question for you.
Okay, yeah. I guess the general feeling amongst the commission is that based on the comments that we've gotten from our town attorney on the wording, wording, proposed wording changes, you know, we feel it needs a fair amount of work to answer and resolve her questions or issues. And it seems like our feeling is that would not be best done as part of a public hearing, that we should go offline, do the work, and come back with a, you know, a finalized version for presentation to the public. So I wanted, I don't know, your thoughts on it, John? Anything like this in the past?
Yeah, so I guess I don't know if, I, I, I've been talking to, um, Santa earlier this afternoon. It would be, I don't know if the proponent, I don't know if it was Rose or Rosa, was with you this evening, because it, to a certain extent, understanding the impetus and sort of demand behind the desire to change these regulations, it would be useful to understand to see, you know, how, how far off they were from what the, what the desire was. And if there was any other public comment, I, I don't think there's any harm in you opening, because you, you know, you laid that issue on the floor. You said, okay, so outline definitions, current visibility, things like that ought to be addressed. If there was some public sentiment, particularly from, you know, the, when the people were sort of advancing this contract, if we could get that out there so we could get a better sense of how to best justice, if that was the desire. You know, this is your application, so you have no statutory timeline. You could, you know, open the public hearing. If there was anyone there that had comments, particularly the proponent, you could, you could hear that. And then, you know, while the public hearing is still open, you could not, not close it and then continue to sort of work through, table the, the hearing after you're done talking about it this evening, and come back to the revision. There's, there's no, there's no reason you couldn't do that.
Okay. My, I guess my concern would be, I don't believe Rose has seen the proposed wording changes that Carrie has. I believe it's just been circulated internally. So she would be hearing these, Rose and other members of the public would be hearing these proposed changes for the first time tonight.
Okay, okay. And to me, if, if you don't mind, I mean, if it's, if it's sort of all in safe with the commission, I would lean on leaving the hearing open rather than not opening it first place, because then you're going to add, you need to be at a place where you need to re-advertise it. But this is already been advertised.
Yeah, right.
And, and again, because you're not under any statutory timeframe to, to close it, you could just leave the hearing open and kind of have this as ongoing item of discussion. So you could, you know, open the hearing if somebody's there to talk about it, you know, propose that, that, you know, perhaps staff work with the town attorney and, and reach out to Rose and try to figure out if we're, you know, we can get closer to her concept of the, the attorney's comments, and then kind of come back to the, the revised while the hearing's still open.
Mm-hmm. Well, based on the fact that we're not tied to any statutory timeframe, does that change? I mean...
I guess that makes a difference, other than, so if we open it, are we obligated to talk about it tonight? I mean, without, I mean, Rose is in the audience here. She's in the public.
Right.
Audience, but like Bob said, she hasn't seen this, so...
Well, you're not, you're not preparing the application. You can talk about it. If the chairman would like to, you know, open the hearing, not receive any comments right now, and just take that, take that motion to the table of the hearing until the next meeting, you're certainly free to do that. I, you know, I'd be, I'd be curious to hear, personally, obviously, you may not be all familiar with the, with the issue at hand more than I am, but I'd be curious to hear exactly what was wrong, current regulation, what needs to be fixed, to help sort of guide that discussion. But, you know, that's something that we could, you know, establish, because, um, we took the back of the, the rose and whatever, outside the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So then I think what we'd like to do is open the public hearing, defer any discussion or comments at this point. We can then, I believe, provide the proposed wording changes to any member of the public who desires them. And then we could have town staff work with whoever wants to be involved to address the town attorney's questions and issues.
That sounds good.
Sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for Application 21-12.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no? Okay. The public hearing for Application 21-12 is now open, and as discussed, we will table this public hearing, provide documentation to members of the public that wish it, and have town staff work on addressing the attorney's concerns. So I will, I would ask for a motion then to table the public hearing for Application 21-12.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pardon me, I have a procedural question and issue for the commission. Will you mind where?
Yeah, if you would step up to the podium and address yourself. Identify yourself, please.
Frank Magnata, 395 Main Street. When I saw the legal notice, I immediately went to call the land use office in the town hall to get copies of, of the details of the proposed changes. They were nowhere to be found, in contrary to what the legal notice said. It took me several phone calls and four emails over a period of a week to finally accumulate all those changes that you apparently have before you. I consider that a serious procedural flaw in this process. When you don't have a public documents available to the public in the land use office, I think that's a major problem. You need to fix that. And the other question I have is, this commission, you know, exercised the public hearing and the notice. A lot of people showed up tonight hoping to be heard, and now because you have your, your attorney's comments, you just want to table the hearing. My question and concern is why you, why you went through the public hearing notice and process, when you did not have all staff comments and you didn't have your attorney's comments? And that, that, you know, you didn't expect that to affect this process? That's my concern and my, my question to the commission on procedural issues. The first one being the lack, the inaccessibility of, of your proposed changes is a serious procedural issue. Thank you.
As I'm, okay, as I'm, regarding your first issue, as I'm sure you're aware, we are somewhat short-staffed in the land use department.
Yes, I really am.
We will, I will bring that to the attention of the land use department.
I did finally get, I sent over several emails, all the copies of the bits and pieces that made up the whole public hearing. I don't know why just a copy of those wasn't on the, on the desk at the land use office for anyone to look at when they came in. That's all. It would be as simple as that.
Understood. Yep, I understand.
Thank you.
And regarding your second issue about timing, my understanding is that the public hearing was advertised prior to us receiving the comments from the town attorney.
Yes, I understand that. I understand your question about how you, how to continue and close the hearing, things like that, yes. My, my major concern was the lack of the documents and publicly accessible.
Understood.
To what, to what your proposal, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Phil. Okay, may I have, let's see, we didn't do a motion to... Yes?
Before we table it, do we want to just open it up for public hearing for people who did show up to talk? And then table it for any, like, at least we can consider what they want to say and then, you know, apply that to, you know, what we actually do.
Yeah, again, they haven't seen the proposed changes, so I don't think they'll be able to speak to those, but we can certainly entertain any other public comment on this issue. Yes? Please approach the podium and identify yourself.
I am Rose Letta. Just a couple of questions. I'm, I'm specifically interested in the corner lot text changes. Was there a substantial amount of changes to that?
I would say that was the section that had the most changes.
Right. As the gentleman prior spoke, will I be able to get a copy of the proposed changes from either your board, the attorney, or land use department?
To the best of my knowledge, we would be able to provide, we will be able to provide this.
And as you, as you've mentioned, there's that sixty, sixty-five day period that we have to fall in, now that the public hearing is open. No? No?
We're not subject to that.
Since it's, it's our own application, so John has said that, and I've heard it from others, since it is our own application, the town's own application, we are not subject to this, to the timeline.
So do you have any idea on the timeline when we can get back to this? Is it next month?
I would hope that if we can get people together in a timely fashion, we could at least discuss at our next meeting, which would be June 2nd, I believe.
Will the town attorney be here?
We can request that she does, at, at time.
This way we can expedite this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John, go ahead.
Those or whoever wishes to get a copy of this, I will say that the land use admin has been out sick for the last couple days, and unable to communicate it as normally. I'll pick up the best we can. People would like to request a copy of this, it could be this way, email me. It's a simple email, it's just PZC for Planning and Zoning Commission, PZC@PortlandCT.org, and we'll, we'll get that, get the copies to whoever's available.
Okay, thanks, John. Did everyone get that address? PZC, Planning Zoning Commission at PortlandCT.org. Any other comments from members of the public on this application? Okay, then, may I have a motion to table Application 21-12? And a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing for Application 21-12 is now tabled. So we'll move on to our regular meeting. The first item is Application 21-13, 264 Freestone Avenue, request for site plan review for excavation work to construct a new eighteen thousand square foot building for contractor trade units. Application and property of Global Freestone LLC, assessors MAP 20, Lot 179, Zone I, industrial. Would someone like to speak on behalf of this application?
Do you have a decent view?
Hmm...
Not ended the ring one? Like you got a moment to set down?
I don't believe we have one in the room, yeah. I would think, oh, perhaps over, so we can see you and the... Is that okay?
Can you tell me where?
Yeah, I would say about there. I don't know if we'll be able to have John see that, though.
Just get it out of the line of the camera.
No, I have, I do have...
I didn't get anything in this package.
This was from last, it was from last time, and I think we didn't talk about it last time.
Okay.
John, would you like to be able to see the blueprints that are being presented?
Um, no, it's, it's more fun than you do, right? The last thing that, that was, was needed for this was to respond to the town engineer's comments. We received no additional plan sets, so I don't have anything electronically on this. And so I don't, I don't know if the, the town engineer's comments have been that, we have no communication with him either, so we're flying a little bit blind here.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess we're good, Dave?
Okay.
It's good where it is.
Well, we, we start off agreeing. We are flying blind here. So for your record, my name's Rob Ultra Midas. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I'm just going to submit the spelling of my last name. You're welcome. That's usually quicker than, than actually spelling it. So I am the engineer of record for the applicant, which is Global Freestone LLC, both owner and applicant. We recently submitted an application for site plan review associated with excavation and construction of an eighteen thousand square foot building. That would be a contractor style warehouse at 264 Freestone Avenue. Is everybody very familiar with the, with the site, I presume? Okay. To, to John's point, we, with our application, we do have comments from the town consultant engineer, from Jeff Jacobson. We are presently in the midst of developing responses and making plan revisions in response to that. We do hope to be resubmitting soon. I've, I've asked you to table this application a couple times. You meet every two weeks. I just felt it was my obligation to come here this evening, give you a brief presentation, keep you informed, and, and move forward. But we, we recognize we're not ready for, for your action this evening. So unless it's your preference to have all staff comments addressed, you know, I can certainly pack up my things and, and...
I say prime the pump.
I, I really appreciate that. Okay, so the, the first sheet in the plan set is the A2 boundary survey that was prepared in March by CT Land Surveying LLC. That's my surveyor. The site, it's about six point three acres in size. It is the site of the former Scott &amp; Daniels manufacturing facility. It is covered by a series of interconnected buildings, about a hundred and ten thousand square feet worth. There's a small outbuilding, about twenty-five hundred square feet, you see in the northeast corner of, of the, of the parcel. The southern, and eastern, and western portions of the site are paved, and around the backside, you have gravel area for vehicular traffic. And up along the north and northeast sides is some sloped woodland areas. The next sheet. I won't go through every sheet of the plan set, but this is the landscaping and erosion control plan, because it depicts the proposed building location. You see it highlighted up in the north part of the site in orange. That building is, again, eighteen thousand square foot in size. It is sixty feet deep and three hundred feet long. That would accommodate twelve, twenty-five foot separate storage or contractor warehouse units. The other portion of, of the development I want to point out is some paving in front of that, so that's just north of the existing building, south of the proposed building, and then grading along the north and east sides of the parcel, primarily to construct a stormwater detention basin. I've prepared calculations that demonstrate that with that basin, we'll actually have reductions in peak flows from the site in, in all of the designed storm events, that of course will be reviewed by Mr. Jacobson. I will point out that it was originally a site plan back in nineteen eighty-nine that showed a smaller detention basin in this very same area. Having been out there and inspected, if it, if it really ever was constructed, it probably was not constructed properly and really doesn't function as such. This is a much larger basin, and again, is intended to mitigate the redevelopment that, that we're proposing. So again, really, I, I just wanted to come here, give you a brief presentation of the project, get your initial feedback, and let you know we are responding to staff comments, and we hope to resubmit very shortly.
I guess my question would be, do you feel as though you'll be in a position to present this at our next meeting, which would be June 2nd, I believe it is?
Sure. And if I may, if John knows the answer about the timeframe, where we stand with the application and the time left in our application, that is my hope to be here in two weeks, ready, you know, for, for your consideration.
Okay.
I believe we are, we are still within the, well, thirty-five days of the, of the review period. We still are within our sixty-five day extension, and then two weeks will be in the hole.
Okay. So again, that, that is, that's mine and the applicant's intent is, is to be ready in, in two weeks, and back before you then.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Where is the parking that is associated with these storage units?
So the parking would essentially be in, in front. The units are wide enough to have an overhead door and a man door, and each having a parking space in, in the front of, of a unit.
One, one space per unit?
Correct. Correct. Essentially two, if you consider the parking in front of the, the overhead door as well, then it would be two per unit. One of the things that we, or I intend to, to clean up, so since my, since my client has owned this site, he made application back in twenty eighteen for, for warehousing, so that was a change from manufacturing to warehousing. A hundred and ten thousand square feet. This is, this is a multi-tenanted building. One of the things that we'll be cleaning up and putting on the final site plan is the various, the different uses in there, their parking demand, and, and putting a table on, on the, you know, what would hopefully become the approved site plan, that would tie all of that in together.
And the building to the west would remain?
That would remain. That's a small footprint of about twenty-three hundred square feet, that standalone building.
What is that used for?
I believe detailing, but I will verify that for the next meeting. Oh, I say detail, auto detailing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Comments? Thanks for the overview, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you for indulging me, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
So our next item of business is to receive in two applications. The first is Application 21-16, 264 Main Street, request for special permit for change of use on second floor from commercial to residential apartments. Application and property of 264 Main LLC, assessors MAP 28, Lot 48, Zone B3. And the second application to receive in is number 21-17, 143 Marlborough Street, request for special permit for small engine repair business to be located in existing rear building. Application of Chester Dumont, property of 143 Marlborough Street LLC, assessors MAP 20, Lot 214, Zone B2. Okay. So the next item of business is preliminary discussion. So this is questions regarding property located at Brownstovin Avenue and Lower Main Street. Letter received from Rachel Fazino on May 10th, 2022. So would someone, is someone present who would like to begin the discussion?
I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear us tonight, I very much do. This is my father. He is actually the owner of the parcel, so...
If you could identify yourself, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Rachel Fazino.
We'll break that down.
Okay. Rachel Fazino, daughter, Joe Fazino. He is the owner of the parcel. So I've been going through what we previously have, which appears to be a number of applications that were previously denied on the parcel property. Our main question, my main question at this point, to move this forward to a new application. It's currently located, from what I can tell, in the flood overlay zone and an industrial zone, so it's dual zones. What we're trying to figure out is what we can actually have... And the second application to receive in is number twenty-one dash seventeen, one forty-three Marlborough Street, request for special permit for small engine repair business to be located in existing rear building. Application of Chester Dumont, property of one forty-three Marlborough Street LLC, assessors map twenty, lot two fourteen, zone B two. So the next item of business is preliminary discussion. So this is questions regarding property located at Brownstovina Avenue and Lower Main Street. Letter received from Rachel Fazino on May tenth, twenty twenty-two. So would someone, is someone present who would like to begin the discussion?
And I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear us tonight, I very much do. This is my father, he is actually the owner of the parcel, so...
If you could identify yourself, please?
My name is Rachel Fazino.
We'll break down that.
Okay, Rachel Fazino, daughter, Joe Fazino, he is the owner of the parcel. So I've been going through what we previously have, which appears to be a number of applications that were previously denied on the parcel of property. Our main question, my main question at this point, to move this forward to a new application, it's currently located, from what I can tell, in the flood overlay zone and an industrial zone, so it's dual zones. What we're trying to figure out is what we can actually have on this parcel of property. As you guys know, it's, each statue is different. From what I can tell, the flood overlay zone does allow a dwelling with a special permit, which is what we've previously submitted, and the industrial does allow a warehouse with a dwelling. So we just don't know where to go with a new application.
So I'll take a shot at this, explaining overlay zones as best I can, and then I'll probably ask John to back me up. I'm sure he has a lot more knowledge in this area. But my understanding is that overlay zones, in essence, take precedence over the normal, if you will, normal zone zoning region for that area. So overlay zones can be, they are in addition to the zoning regulations in place for that existing zone. They can be more strict in certain areas because of the area which, you know, this parcel resides in.
Okay.
So John, I'm sure you can probably give a much better explanation than that.
Right, I think that was well said, and this is stuff I could have went through with both Mr. Fazino and Rachel over the last couple of weeks. There seems to be a little bit of a strange, sort of gap in the way the regulations are writ. Because, so both sets of regulations apply. As Rachel said, it's zone industrial, so there's a use table for industrial zone, and then there's a use table for the special flood hazard zone, which is, again, as you stated, overlay on the industrial zone. And the trick is that each of those allows some category of dwelling and some category of warehouse storage. But the way that they're writ is, in the industrial zone, the dwelling has to be subsidiary to the warehouse use, and in the special flood zone, the storage has to be subsidiary to the dwelling. And so the question is, can, you know, both uses are clearly allowed, and so can the commission come to an interpretation, I think a reasonable interpretation, that essentially they can coexist in the same building on the same site? And obviously dwelling in the flood zone, all habitable area, things like that, elevated all above flood state storage. But can the commission come to an interpretation that both are simultaneously allowed, essentially equal parts or accessory to each other? But it's odd, and I can't show my screen to show you. But there's a couple of sections in question, seventy-four four, the table uses the flood plain, and then there's table five, something in the industrial zone. But essentially, that's the challenge that the Fazinos are facing, is that the dwelling is allowed in the flood zone, and it needs to have, and it allows that it have storage as accessory. But in the industrial zone, the storage, the warehouse, has to be principal, which, you know, if they're exactly the same size, you know, it doesn't really make sense that they should be allowed just because one has to be subsidiary to the other, if that makes sense.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
What, right now, the existing building, there's a building?
There is no existing building.
There's no building?
No.
Thought I saw a building on the plan.
No.
No building?
No building, no building currently existing.
Okay. So what, just out of curiosity, do you want to do?
This has got some time. We've been trying to do this now for two and a half years. In fact, the engineer happened to be here. And every time we've talked, everybody, you have asked us to do this, the dwelling had to be smaller, the drawings had to be redrawn, you know, from the twelve hundred square foot building to an eighth, which we did. We put a wall, new set of stairs, you know, under drawings, with just preliminary. So we've got to this point, we've done everything that you have asked me to do, but then there's always a stop that says, no.
Which is the piece we're trying to get over. So to kind of answer your question, basically, essentially, what we're looking to do is to have, and I don't want to get tripped up over the words because of what each statute allows, so I'm gonna speak plainly, or as best I can, so a warehouse. We're looking for some type of warehouse or storage area underneath.
And me to live there.
And then, you know, the dwelling or a smaller apartment on top. That is the goal that we would like to end up with, and what we need from you guys is essentially just tell us how to get there.
And like I said, we've been here several times, redrawn the drawings. The engineer, which this year has done more than work moving for the drainage, doing the building, doing everything, you know, that we, that you've asked every time, and we've complied every time. And then every time it was denied for something else.
Because of the flood overlay, no, the other denial?
Between the two aspects of what it should be called and what's allowed in this park and then on this park. So it's...
So we're getting tripped up, because one of the denials clearly states that because it's located in the flood overlay zone, they were talking about not allowing the type of storage space with the dwelling, even though when we looked at the statutes that outline that area, it does say it allows it subject to a special permit. So we're just not sure where we're going with it. You know, we have existing plans, we have existing permits that were all previously denied, subject to basically what I just explained, you know, the storage space or warehouse below, the dwelling above.
And he did for parking. We made effort for the parking on the drawings, we moved things, you know, and made the size of the drainage for it, for the, because of the wetland or whatever they call it, the flood plain. We want blowout garage doors on the next set of drawings, okay, and then it was, nope. And then every time we came back with what you asked for, it was denied again. So that's what I'm trying to say, what, like I said, like he said, where's the happy medium that you'll accept that says, okay, even though the word is different, they're both meaning the same in a way? So, you know, it's like a catch twenty-two, what's...
We understand your dilemma. My personal feeling is, we're not going to be able to resolve this tonight. I think we'll have to take it as a takeaway and work with, I don't know, I'm looking for other people's thoughts, work probably with town staff to see if we can resolve the wording discrepancies, and it sounds like you're asking for us to kind of come up with a plan or a design of what would be allowed in this...
Some form of a direction, because I think what's happening here is, you know, we're trying to comply with both sets of statutes, and, you know, we've worked with our engineer, we've worked with our attorney to meet those requirements, and what happens is, whenever we're coming to actually get the permit approved, there's something that's...
Something new.
Yeah, and then we go back to the drawing board, and then it's in violation of another part of the statute. So we're just confused on where to go with it. So we're just hoping for some direction from the board to say, you know, we can do, I don't care, A through Z, whatever it is, it'll lead us in.
But each one says a dwelling, each one says a storage, but the storage is written in a different way, ones for, say, commercial, or ones for the, not residential, but for the dwelling of me living here. So like I said, each one says the same thing, but it's worded different. And I don't know if that's what's holding us up every time, that you say, okay, nope, deny it again, because...
How many applications have you submitted and had denied?
So what I've seen here, and it could be more, but I have four separate applications denied.
Correct, mate, I'm like, plenty. And we've done it every time.
I would like to see those.
Yeah, I remember discussing this, I do not remember the reasons for denying.
I just wonder, the flood hazard zone supersets the industrial?
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna ask John.
Would it be helpful, and I have, I think John, I have John's email, would it be, I mean, I can supply this information, I can give you the permit numbers or whatever, I'm sorry, application numbers, I can supply you, but it's not here, that's helpful.
The paperwork should be in the offices, so I think if we just had the numbers, it's like, then we should be able to at least get them, and we can take a look and see what higher priority has.
This is just what I've had here offhand from the paperwork that I have. So application number two zero dash zero six, application number nineteen dash two eight, application number two zero dash zero six, application number, oh, this one, two zero dash zero eight. And again, there might be more, this is just what I would be able to come up with. I'm sorry. No, that's okay. Application number two zero dash zero eight, application number two zero dash zero six, application number nineteen dash twenty-eight. Oh yeah, two zero dash zero six was the last one, but that might be a repeat.
That's a repeat.
Okay, so I've got three of them there.
And there should be drawings that we did, like, just a little bit, real quick. In fact, I had a builder in Florida trying to keep everybody down. And like I said, we drew it first, at the twelve hundred square foot building, and what they asked, and then that was because with the zoning, he said, well, you can only have eight hundred square feet, and so you have to put a wall in with another stair, which we did, we complied. And there is, like I said, preliminary, so I understand the fire rating, the sheetrock, the double layer for two hours, I understand all that, but that was what we got going. But we had to change the drawing again and again, and we're like, okay, we gotta stop. I just got, like, burned out, I was like, I'm done with it, let me find a way, what do we gotta do? And then I and my daughter-in-law, we said, okay, let's drive in and find out why.
But I don't think we've seen the applications.
I remember the, it probably was the most recent one, twenty dash zero eight. I remember not denying it, I cannot recall the reasons why.
This goes all the way back to, I believe, twenty nineteen-ish.
Yeah, nineteen, right.
So...
So I do remember the most recent one, but I cannot remember why it was denied.
Yeah, well, I...
We'll have to go back.
Yeah.
Bob, in order for us to offer any guidance on this, is that something that we need them to submit another application for, or is that, hey, are we able to, within our scope or authority, to actually give advisory opinions?
Right.
John?
I think part of the challenge is that, I think, most recently, some of the guidance that they've gotten was that they were, and they have seen versions of this, is that they were transformed at the staff level, that they were essentially not eligible to apply for what they were looking for, in the form that they were looking for, and sort of what I had decided that it would be not, you know, for the reason of that accessory or primary use that I mentioned, that difference between industrial zone and the overlay. And I think my hope of this was that this commission was the, went into consideration that those two uses could be submitted essentially simultaneously in equal measures or less, because, and then who received the application as being a worthy potential use in that zone and overlay zone on that parcel, because it requires a special permit, it's gotta have a hump you, it's gotta have a hump anyway. But I think the thing they were trying to get over, the hump of, is if that would even let them up high, and so I, you know, obviously being new, being interim, wanted to sort of run that past you, and sort of get an understanding from the commission that you were needing to look at, painless as an application, with obviously all the appropriate flood measures and moving changes that had been recommended by staff, but just that it was even a potential application for you, before they went through that.
Could you go back and look at what we...
Yeah, I think we'd have to go back and look at, you know, what has been denied in the past and why. But John, I guess a question for you, it sounds like we have, based on your description, we have two sets of regulations, our industrial and then our flood hazard overlay, which may have conflicting wording? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, and I don't, if I can go out and share the screen, I can show you.
Can someone allow John to share his screen, please? Because I guess where I'm headed with this is, if we were to address this, would we need a revision to our text, you know, a text amendment to bring these two in sync? But anyway, that's where I'm headed with this question.
Okay, can you see the screen?
Yes.
So this is table six to the one, permitted industrial uses. And so it's in the I zone. So there is a warehouse use, okay, so that's a warehouse use test means that it's a special, that it's a site plan.
Yep.
And then, then there's also, there was a dwelling.
Dwelling.
Dwelling, so again, to your I, one unit apartment occupied by owner, manager, caretaker, and janitor on the same lot as permitted industrial use. Okay, so you see that, that's a special permit use. So, and subject to number three, title number three, which, you know, refers that to standards in section nine, which is, you know, deals with the size of the unit. So you see, in the industrial zone, the warehouse is allowed, and a dwelling, that's essentially accessory to the warehouse. And then if we go to the special flood zone, which is section seven point four, and I apologize for scrolling here. Okay, so we're in the special flood hazard zone, is that up there now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So a warehouse, you look in here, a warehouse is not necessarily allowed, however, the dwelling is, which is a special permit use. And then there are structures in conjunction with other uses allowed on the table as special permit or site plan uses, so that would also be a special permit use. And then table four refers to the type of dwelling allowed in the underlying zone. So this is sort of the conflict, the question is, you know, in this, in the special flood zone, dwelling is allowed principal use with sort of the warehouse storage is allowed as accessory, that is precisely the reverse in the industrial zone. And so, you know, the question is, which could allow application come in with a dwelling and some storage, you know, basically private warehouse storage, where, you know, both are subsidiary to the other? That's sort of the question. Now, I don't think, I don't really think we need a text change. I mean, obviously, at some point in the future, a text change would be useful, but I think a reasonable interpretation, based on what the applicant is requesting, you know, if it's a small dwelling that complies with the smaller dwelling unit sizes in the industrial zone, and also complies with the category, the requirements for flood hazard, we don't necessarily see that there's a philosophical conflict with the regulations, it's just, wouldn't they be allowed to actually submit for such?
I think I'm starting to remember this a little bit. There was some, there was a question of building something, building additional, you know, building additional structures in the special flood...
Overlay.
Yeah, I think, I, it's starting to ring some bells.
What you're saying is, it's gonna be one building.
Right.
One building with an apartment on top.
Yeah.
Bob, does the, when you have an over, when you have the flood hazard zone, do the laws of that zone take precedence over the other?
That is my understanding.
Over the other zone?
John, could you, that's my understanding.
Is that, is that the case?
They both need to be met, and I mean, the fact that the flood zone, you know, there are very high standards for what happens in the flood zone, and that has to do with, you know, elevation of dwelling, in the case of residence, you know, the minimum floor area, floor elevation of any habitable area, things like that. Obviously, the flood zone has very, very high standards, but both sets of regulations, because it's involved in industrial zone and a flood hazard.
But they can't both be met? That's the problem, correct?
Right.
So, so does one supersede the other?
I guess if there is a conflict, maybe be more restrictive, which in this case would be the flood zone, with the town name. And I don't, I don't really think it's a true conflict, it's just, you know, if you are sort of all in agreement that essentially a fifteen... if, if you are sort of all in agreement that essentially a fifth, you get a use satisfied vote.
Because it, it, both sets of wording indicate that a, a residence and storage is, is, is allowed. See, it sounds like the question is which is, which is primary and which is subservient?
Right.
And, other than the sizes of, the, the sizes of the residence or storage, is that the difference between the two? I mean, I don't know if I, if that was clear.
The requirements for...
Yeah.
The dwelling, I think, was the same, that's why we shortened it to eight hundred square feet and put a wall, cause it was, you know, a building, so...
He's calling it storage.
So to comply with both, we had to make it eight hundred square feet, so, you know, show another set of drawing with a wall, and then another set of stairs coming up to the other side, storage, or whichever you would, uh, how do I wanna say? Okay, even if it became no usage, and just went straight to the ceiling, but as long as it was only eight hundred square feet of living, which we shortened it to, to that applicant.
I, I'm recalling this to be an issue of more building in a flood zone, I think that's...
Something new.
Right, something new in a flood, in a, in a flood area.
So I, the basic question is now, do, does the commission think we, we could entertain this as a viable application? And I think if we were to do, if we were to work with town staff and do some homework on the reasons for the previous denials, I think that would give us some more insight as to, you know, what the, what the issues are, were, are. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Could I, just another thought, you know, I've already won almost fourteen thousand dollars on everybody's, you know, go this, do this, you know, do this. And I was started when Dan, uh, I, I got his card when he was into town, and he's the one that said, you know, Joe, do this, and that's how this got started, you know, cause I came down, you know. So, you know, between engineering and surveying, and every time I came down, you know, and I would have, I don't wanna wanna say that I, let me miss the direction I kept going, you know, and I don't mind, cause I wanna build a, the building, and it, and then it was like, okay, no, another thou, another, you know, keep getting Frank to redesign, redo, and I've done everything, you know, to that, to this point, is what I'm trying to say. So, you know, it's... And I don't mind moving forward, as long as you can tell me, okay, Joe, this is what we want, you know, this is what we need.
Yep, okay. Bob, I have, I have some thoughts, but...
How much of it is, is the whole thing in the flood zone?
The entire building?
I couldn't, I, it was, yeah, and I'm trying to, like, I'm like, like twine or, you know, rivers here.
John, could you point out where it says that warehouses are allowed in, um, the flood zone? I can't find that in, in, not finding that.
I think it says, uh, farm, farm stuff.
I, I see dwellings, fairgrounds, like, I, I'm just not seeing any reference to, um, storage structures or warehouses.
Well, that's the piece that's really tripping us up, because basically, the way that we see this is with the dwelling underneath would be the garage, and store, it's, you know, that's the piece that's tripping us up. We've got the dwelling, and associated with the dwelling would be a garage space. Um, and then you go to the industrial zone, where you almost have to have the verbiage of warehouse in order to get the application approved. Um, so, you know, if this is a situation where one statute governs over the other, um, and you say to us that we have to follow the flood overlay zone despite being in the industrial zone, it would then become a request for a dwelling, um, and the garage space would be below, dwell, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Well, maybe we call it warehouse, right, the other one was just, I think, well, John, was storage, but it's just a verbal, it's, it's worded different in each zone, right?
But in, in this case, what I was looking at in this case, obviously, well, the, the garage part of the dwelling, but also, um, sections like here, structures, um, a paint part, and areas that's, in cases, and uses, hold in conjunction with or accessory to special permit use. So, the, the structure or use being the garage, warehouse, storage, would be accessory to the special permit use of what?
Thank you.
And, and what is going to be under, underneath the, the apartment is on top, and what is...
So then, and that's, again, I don't wanna keep repeating like the warehouse, or garage, or storage, it's however we want to call, however you wanna call it.
No, but what, just what, what were you going to do?
For me, I'm gonna live there, maybe a car, you know, I mean, I'm gonna live there, whatever I have in general. I think at one time, you, they wanted me to put a business. You guys said if I put a business in voting, well, then that's okay. And, and I said, okay, let, you know, tell me what I need to do, is what it keeps coming down to, and then, you know, it kept coming, but then finally it got to the fourth one, I said, I gotta take a break.
So what you want is, you wanna put a home there with an apartment over a garage?
Yep, a dwelling over the garage.
That, that's...
Or, yes, but like I said, the...
And the fear is if we call it the dwelling with a garage in a simplest form, then we get to the industrial statute, and we don't need those requirements.
Cause they're both worded, and like I said, then I was told, you know, well, open up a business, you can do voting down there. I was like, well, then what, what do I have to do to do that? Do you, do I have to open LLC and get a business and start doing voting? Yeah, cause that was one of the times I was told, well, you can do votes. If you wanna do this, come down, I was told so many, so many different, every time I came down. I was even laughed at. By you?
So we're hoping that we can get some direction to, if it's possible, and it is, what would we have to frame this in the application?
I don't think we're gonna be able to give you an answer tonight, unfortunately.
We already knew that, yeah.
So, okay.
We already knew that.
So it's something we will take away and ask, we'll work with staff on, uh, trying to get this. I think I, I understand your request.
I appreciate it, very much so. Um, and as far as hearing, you know, the direction after you guys have the time to review this, look at top applications, and then maybe the direction after reviewing the statutes further, would we hear from planning and zoning?
You'd most likely hear from the land use department.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, 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 it's interesting, this somewhat seems to fall under one of the, the, uh, housing issues that we were talking about last week, about special...
Accessory.
Kind of consideration to, um, to housing and considering things in a different light. I think maybe this might fall under that umbrella. We were, just as a...
Yep.
To help get to our ten percent.
Right, so we'll have to, we'll, we'll work with the land use department and come up with a plan. Okay, any other comments? Sounds like you have something to add.
I'm just thinking about, I mean, what they're talking about is putting in an apartment, uh, an apartment in a, an industrial zone, that's really what they're looking to do. Or, or, uh, residence, I guess, in an industrial zone.
Yep.
That, that's a lot of the regulations.
If it's, if it is, uh, supplementary to a, a business.
Right.
That's, and so, but that's not...
It actually needs to be supplementary to a business, that's what you want to use. There's nothing in the regulation that requires a warehouse to be a profit-making facility. Someone could just have a storage facility that they use for their personal use.
Right.
Yeah, and that sounds like what they, what they do.
Right, sounds like, yeah.
So, okay, if you're looking at it like that, it's just a storage facility for their personal use, that is also allowed. It doesn't have to be a business, John, you're saying.
I mean, you know, it, it, the, the, the use category, the two use categories in the industrial zone that are allowed would be warehouse, and again, there is, there is nothing that, that in the regulations or to impact with the definition of warehouse, you use sort of the common use, the common, you know, the definitional definition of warehouse, just a storage goal. Um, and, and then the, the accessory dwelling, um, is allowed for, you know, the owner or, you know, owner, caretaker of the principal use, which in that case would be warehouse. So, yeah, I mean, if, so you ask, is this, is this somebody's house, somebody's home? Yes, and it is also a warehouse with a accessory law. And, and that's, that's, that's precisely what you're thinking, which, which precise, you know, can you straight face, you know, accept this, this definition, accept this use as being allowed, I quote, industrial and sublime.
So I think it's the term warehouse that's throwing us off, cause I don't, I don't think of a garage to put my car in at my residence as a warehouse, I don't think of it that way.
No, that because the residence is, is principal, you know, that it's clearly a, a residential use, and, yeah. That, that is precisely the issue.
Yep. Okay, other questions or comments on this topic? Something to sleep on tonight? Okay, then the next item on our agenda is a staff report. So I'll just run down the list, if anybody has anything here, just holler. Town center, village reviews, bond reductions, zoning regulation work group, and any correspondence. So hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. The commission will now hear brief comments from anyone in the public, either here in the room or on Zoom. Okay, we have one speaker here in the room, if you would please identify yourself.
My name is Elwin Kyle, middle of Adam Road in Portland. I'm appearing before you because subsequent to this, I, I distributed a, an advisory, what I'm gonna call an advisory, to try to maintain your awareness and, uh, attention to the significance of the site plan approval that this commission issued for what is now being called Brainerd Place. And I just wondered if any of you had any questions at all, or if there was any ambiguity in what I had submitted, because I'd like to make sure that I'm clear in my concerns about where that, um, development lies currently in its, in its progression, and what is likely to, I think, come before you in the future, just...
So one of the thoughts I had was, um, in line with one of your major ones, and that is the, you know, the preservation of those historic buildings, and, you know, how is that being handled and monitored? And, um, what will be the future of those buildings?
Well, I think that's a concern that most of the townspeople share as well. But let me be even more specific in terms of your responsibility with, with respect to that issue. The approval for that mixed-use development not only speaks to the incorporation of the historic houses that are there into the mixed-use development, but it also speaks specifically to the restoration meeting the Secretary of Interior's standards for, uh, the restoration. That is a requirement that is quite specific, and I am very much concerned that it's properly understood. What I'm suggesting is it's not enough to have someone come in and say, oh, this is a wonderful old mansion house, but, uh, you know, the window sills are deteriorated a bit, and they slap in some Anderson windows. And they'll argue, well, it's thermal paint, and they, they have little plastic inserts that make it look like, you know, the millions are all there, and that's not what we're talking about. It's not what the instruction and the permit requires. Each one of those structures is a jewel in a, in a, in a real sense, and has been distinguished by any number of studies and, and reviews. It's not too much, given the scale of the development and the understanding that this commission provided to it in, uh, in elevating the density of housing. This is five times the housing level that ordinarily would have been allowed, only because of this provision that those three structures be properly restored, and those standards were specifically indicated. I'm gonna continue to speak to you about issues like that, because as you are well aware, the town has been without any meaningful oversight of, of that development for some time now. And that's a concern for you and for me and for everyone. And I'm pleased to see John Guskowski with us. I hope you'll rely on him for all the advice that you can get in, in regard to what I'm speaking to. The other, the other issue is that I'm also certain that there does not appear to be any successful engagement with the commercial, uh, construction and development that's required by this mixed-use, uh, permit. And already, you have been asked, and you have provided some reduction in the amount of commercial development that will be required in order to get a certificate of occupancy. I'm saying here tonight again, I expect that there's going to be a further request for, um, a lessening of that requirement, and I do not think it's in the town's best interest to entertain it. Thank you, I, I, I understand that I continue to harp on this, but, uh, I'm invested, so are you, and I believe it's the most significant, um, economic development, engagement that this town has before it and likely for quite some time, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, El.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's...
I think I have a similar question, but go ahead.
So how do we have this type of, you know, how do we have this monitored and have some oversight over it so that we can be assured that what we were, we approved in the site plan is actually occurring?
So I guess...
So that we don't have Anderson windows put in a hundred something year old building?
So I don't know if John can answer that, maybe Elwin can help us understand. Where does... Okay. Help us understand, if you would, where does a responsibility lie for overseeing the progress and the standards for this project? Is it in zoning enforcement? I, I do not know the answer to that question.
Let's ask John.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Would John know? Yeah?
Yeah, and I would, I would need to, I have to say, I haven't read through the entirety of the, the approval details, but in that this was a rather complicated and highly designed special section that takes place in the village, there's, should be a high degree of design oversight such that the buildings are constructed to the architectural details that were presented and approved as part of the special permit. So, yeah, that, I, I would say, as, as voting terms are whole and buildings are constructed, those, those details, insofar as they were architecturally felt that were part of the permit package, would be followed up, because that would be probably the zoning officer, planner, working with the building official, and possibly, you know, the residents of, of the, um, design advisory or the building design board to, to ensure that the details were being constructed the way it was developed.
But how about if those, what if those individuals are not knowledgeable in historic detail, and so they're not able to adhere to, like, the state historical requirements? I mean, is there, do we say, do we suggest or recommend that we have an outside, um, yeah, a consultant, that it, this is what they do? I mean, I, I'm just...
The answer is yes. I mean, it, it requires someone with a specific understanding of what the Secretaries of Interior Standards for Restoration mean, and, and how to oversee their, their application. But let's put that aside for a second and look at the bigger picture. This commission made changes in the regulations to allow mixed-use development at this high level of 15 apartments for every, I forget how many square feet of commercial development space, as opposed to just three. You, you could get three apartments for every, I don't know, every thousand square feet. Now you're going to get 15 for the same if, and this is what your commission said, if you make certain that you're going to utilize these three historic mansion homes.
Right.
Which, by the way, had been presented to the town by a huge study with townspeople's engagement for a long period of time to say, this is what we want. If you get, you had A, B, or C in the, in the layout of this mixed-use development, various amounts of green space in different locations of commercial versus apartment buildings. The developer came in and said, "Blonde, marry the A and the B," and, and received not only the approval that, in, in the form of high density for the restoration and utilization of those three houses, um, but the town, in addition to support you as a commission, hired a consultant to write the site plan approval to implement that change that, that you made. It's that site plan approval that speaks to your obligations for continued oversight. It says in it, if you read it, and that's why I keep pushing on it, if you read it, it says to you, if that developer wants to make changes or makes changes, it's only with your approval that that can take place. It also suggests, and I'm just suggesting this, and John could read it and understand it clearly, that the town has an obligation to oversee, uh, the requirements that are written into it. And that means they're going to have to hire some special consulting support, which was the reason for the permit fees that are also required in this mixed-use development. It's all part of that site plan approval. The, the initial level of permit fees was in excess of $200,000. And it was in knowing that for a project of this size and this complexity, there's no way that our town building inspector or zoning enforcement operator is going to be able to deal with that at all. You're going to have to go out and with a consulting contract, have the electrical and, and construction services all inspected properly. And that's why those fees were incorporated into the, the approval. Again, if you, I'm just interested, read it the way I'm trying to read it, guys, and it says to me that you do have a role. If it's only to, in your, your job is to communicate with the town hall and to say to them, uh, how's it going? We, we, give us an update.
Yeah, we, we were asking that.
And, you know...
Nothing was happening.
I, I continue to watch this, and I'm not terribly satisfied with what I see. When, when the parties in the development realm of this project come before the Board of Selectment, I don't see the clarity, or quite honestly, the, the, the accuracy of what's being said. And the example that I used in my note to you was that there's been constant reference to the delays and difficulties that have been, been involved in this project because a nonprofit group has failed to meet the expectations of the developer and, as required in, well, it's bogus. It's absolutely bogus, and it's, it's, and more than inaccurate. There's nowhere in any of the proceedings or in, in any documentation or any proceeding that says anything about how a nonprofit is involved in the development at all. There is a nonprofit that is interested in, and I'm a member of that group. And we created that entity just as a, an incentive for the parties in the development to know that there would be at least a group interested in relieving the developer of the need for rest, restoring one of those structures. Has nothing to do at all with any of the requirements or obligations at all, there's no contract, or no, nothing. We just, we thought that that would be a useful encouragement to make sure that this project got off the ground, and that we would be at least eligible to engage in, in a helpful way. Had nothing to do at all with the outcome. So it's just, it's upsetting to, to, to watch this not progress the way most of us that have been involved in it for a long time had hoped. The good news is that the site has obviously changed dramatically and necessarily. And everything that was a public safety hazard has been eliminated. The fencing that went up finally ensured that the public safety was ensured so people wouldn't be falling in the cellar holes and, and being injured, there was no fire hazard any longer with the buildings out of, out of, out of sight. And if it stopped there today, I'd be perfectly happy, because we, we have, we've accomplished that, and, and the, the real essence of that site remains, and that's those three, it's the Brainerd House, the Sage House, and the Hart Gardens. And I'm hopeful that those will be attended to, but you can take a look for yourself. Nothing has been done, and the costs of dealing with the Secretary's standards of rehabilitation and restoration are only mounting. They're not, why would they just be left into that, in that state for so long if they were really serious about doing what is required in that site? So, I'm, I'm running off on the road here, but... Is it, did I confuse you further or not?
No.
I think you have a role. Again, I just say, read it for yourself, and, and that's why I'm asking you to do that. It's actually very, it's a short, it's only six pages. The site plan approval is six pages. It's, I think it's really quite clear, and I think it says to you adequately what your role is and should be in the future. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elwin.
Uh, just in time. Uh, again, for the record, Frank Magnotta, 395 Main Street. Uh, again, I'd like to comment on, on procedural issues here now that I see the meetings getting back to in-person, but we have in-person and Zoom kind of mixing together. One of the things I immediately noticed as someone sitting in the audience trying to understand and see what was being presented with that last applicant, I had no idea. I could not see that drawing in any way, shape, or form. Uh, the public couldn't see it, and from what I understand, the people Zooming could not see it. And I see that as a major flaw in your, in your presentation. When we were doing strictly Zoom, it was relatively simple. The administrator would, would share your, their screen with the applicant presenting. They would pull up their drawings on the screen for everyone to see. You saw, anybody, you know, zoomed in would see it. That has fallen by the wayside, apparently, now that you're, you're back here. The, that, you need to come up with a, with a process that either you can electronically show your drawings on, on the TV screen here, which then the public can see and the Zoom people can see, or you need to set your placard up with a camera directly on that at all times. So, again, that shows up on your screens for everyone to see.
That's a good idea.
You need to film it right now.
Yes.
So we're still trying to figure out...
Just one second, John.
But the, 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 the solution is to require the applicants to present their PDFs of their drawings to your tech people. They have it in a, in a, in a file that when the applicant comes up, they click a button, they find the drawing, and it's popped up on their screen. Very easy to know. Very, it's very common, it's being put down in towns all over the state, even, even before they went to, to the COVID, the Zoom and all that. It was a standard practice to electronically show, and they have it set up like this, you've got the setup, it's perfect.
Yep, okay.
To show, show that.
I'll take the blame for that, because I was asked if we wanted to put it on camera, and I thought if the commission members and the presenter were able to see it, that would be sufficient, so I said no. So I'll take the, I'll take the blame for that.
It is not. It is the, it's commission's obligation to, to make sure the public can see that presentation.
Okay. I would just ask in the future that you would bring that to our attention before the presentate, takes place, presentation takes place? We could, we could have rearranged the, the...
Well, I said I was not aware until, you know, I saw the presentation, I realized it. And I didn't want to interfere, I didn't want to disrupt the presentation, since it wasn't final anyway, so...
Yep.
But again, that, you've, you've now got the technology and the setup to accommodate this very easily.
Okay. John, John, you had a question?
No, I just had a comment on that.
Yep.
Had the applicant provide the specific, the, the PDF, the, 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 the presenting I could have shared it on my screen the same way I did if it was on the regular screen. Uh, we were just on board with, had the applicant that the presentation would be taken place. So it's, it's really not a technology problem, it's a communication problem, yeah.
Gotcha.
Do, do you routinely request the PDFs of the applicant's drawings, or...
Yes, of course.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
One thing we can do is that in the future, when they have like an easel like that or something like that...
Yep.
We can have them put it right behind it, because the, the way the, the screen shows what they're, the cameras on them, I think there's enough playroom there that you can get it all in one, one picture.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll do better next time, promised. Okay, other questions? Comments from members of the public? Okay, anybody on Zoom indicating they'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Um, then our next item is to approve the minutes from May 15th. And let's see if I can find, I think that was our normal commission staff. So, okay, so in attendance at that meeting were myself, Chantel, Rob, Carolyn, and Victoria. So, does anyone have any changes to the minutes from May 15th? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve those minutes? And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
So much.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep, thank you, everyone.